Welcome, everybody, this evening. Okay, Kelly, would you like to come up and talk to us?
I would. I'm here on behalf of the school district in our school, Council Grove High School, asking permission to use carts, ATV vehicles, to take our students who are attending prom this Saturday evening to the Riverwalk Bridge to use that. It was received very well by the community last year, although we still intend this year to have prom. We appreciated the opportunity to have it on the Riverwalk. We think we'll use it at the gymnasium this year. Weather permitting, we'd like to have that opportunity to shuttle them for safety purposes and traffic purposes to the east side of the Riverwalk Bridge and then shuttle them back to the school for the prom. And again, that's this Saturday. We know it's awful short notice, but we failed to come before you earlier.
Any discussion?
We should do it.
You're gonna hear a motion. Sharon and Jason, on favor?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That was true, painless.
The hard part is you gotta stay for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, moving on, we've got the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the previous meeting, our appropriations, and our retroviejo liquor license. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent.
Okay, second?
Second.
Would you move the second amendment to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? opposed? Motion carries? There being no bulk business, we'll move forward to new. Together with veterans, Jim Crosby.
First, thank you very much for allowing me to come and talk to you tonight. I owe you an apology because part of my explanation to this to Nick wasn't well done. When we talk about together with veterans, we say together with veterans and, and we use capital "and" to be inclusive to the entire county. It is not specifically for veterans. This is an entity that approached me about three years ago and asked me to start it. It is a, while they say a fully funded program, unfortunately, you cannot use funds for certain things, and that includes services from people. So about 14 months ago, I was approached, again, for the third time, and quite honestly, I think, as some of you know, I didn't do it the first two times because my wife Sue and I had lost our son to suicide. We just were not ready to take this on. He was a veteran, completely not ready to take it on. And what led us to finally do it was another suicide in our community, and that was DJ Bremer. I had known DJ since he was a young man, so I decided to take a look into what this program was. And quite honestly, while designed for veterans, the rules are pretty clear. This says, as long as my steering committee has 50% or more veterans on it, we can offer it to the entire community. We can offer it to the entire county. So I met with a man named Bob Dare, who is my mentor. He lives in Atlanta, Georgia, and I told him that I would be willing to take this on, and I started looking for people on my steering committee. And the people that we chose are those type of people that are in our community and see people every day and would notice those changes with people every day. Bobby and Christie Alexander, of course, we have Bobby. Bobby is a business owner, Christie in the business with him, Christie is a pastor. And then the big thing with Bobby is him and DJ were boy-haired friends. So Bobby has been on board. My wife Sue is involved, Rebecca Elias is involved as the American Legion commander, Jay Troxel just came on board as a business owner and a veteran. And then we have Arthur Wells. And if you know Arthur Wells, everybody is at, I have Arthur. Arthur Wells could talk to that microphone, and the microphone will talk back. He is a guy that can talk to anybody in the community. Part of why I'm here is that we are getting ready to end Phase Two and go into Phase Three. And at the end of Phase Two, it talks about having a community readiness assessment. And we have had some people within our community agree to take that assessment. Thank you, DJ. And that assessment basically comes down to is, what does your county or what does your entity really know about suicide prevention and education? And I'll be the first one to tell you, I have done extensive research, and I've been to now three different courses on suicide. Every psychologist in the country will tell you, you cannot prevent a suicide if somebody actually wants to do it. But what you can do is you can educate the people to try to give people help as soon as possible. And I'd like to ask the question, and I'd like everybody in the room to take part if they would, okay? How many people in here have been touched by suicide, either by knowing the individual, hearing of it, or having it personally within your family? Would you please raise your hand for me? It's everybody in the room. Give you a couple of statistics that I just learned that a course that I went to is 65 to 72% of Americans are touched by suicide in some way, okay? If you talk about the military, that percentage goes to 88%. It is becoming an epidemic. It was bad before we started COVID, and now it's getting to the point where our civilian populace is overtaking our military in the number of average suicides a day, okay? The next thing I would tell you is, everybody automatically assumes that that 18 to 34-year age group is the ones that are the most in need. That's true when you talk percentages, okay? But when you talk overall numbers of suicide, the largest age group is 45 to 64 in rural America that has access to guns. That is our county. I got some information from Sheriff Jay Simeka, who is also on our board, as well as one of your police officers, Marquis Godley is on our board with his wife, Christie. And over the last eight years in Morris County, we have had 13 suicides in a county of 5,300 people. That doesn't include the three former students of USD 417 just outside the county that died by suicide in Alavista, okay? You'll notice I use a little bit of terminology the first time and the second time, right? The first time I said committed, the second time I said died. One is an action word, the other one specifically says what happens. If you take nothing else out of this, I would appreciate the terminology change because when people commit something and it shows action, people are more apt to do it. So we've had, so altogether, I would say, we have had 16 people die by suicide in Morris County. That's two a year. One is too much. So here is our dilemma. I told you we were going from Phase Two to Phase Three of our process. In Phase Two, it specifically asks you to identify any shortfalls that you feel are in your county and how you want to address those. So one of the things our group talked about when Officer Godley got back, he talked to us about what they teach at the law enforcement academy on how to handle a mental health crisis. Having seen people in mental health crisis, doing, you know, having been in the military as long as I was, I've seen it for quite some time. And to be honest, what he said was, it kind of threw me back a little bit because it was basically an afternoon of, please make sure, if you have a plan, you don't do it today, and we're gonna try to get you some help. The number one reason that people say they choose not to die by suicide is that a caring compassionate individual took notice in them and tried to help them. The number one reason. So if I could pay this, I would, but I can't. The money we have is $100,000 funded for three years from the Veterans Administration in a quick, a very quick budget lesson on appropriated funding from the government. There are certain things you can buy that are people and stuff. I can buy all the stuff that I want with that $100,000. But the only people that I can pay is a facilitator and a coordinator, which is me, and I take no salary. I am way too passionate about it to spend a little bit of money to put in my pocket. Now, behind that, because it's an appropriated fund, which means it came from a law. So my other side over here, I'm a member of the enlisted association of the National Guard of Kansas, and I am in the legislative, I'm one of our legislative liaisons, and I have brought this to our legislative folks to say, this is absolutely the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. If you want to talk about suicide prevention and education, the number one thing we should be doing is having a critical, a critical, a critical need that we have is a mental health first responder. You have firemen, you have police officers, you know, but none of them are trained in mental health crisis. None of them are. So our proposal would be that we would hope anyways that the city, for those people in the city that are in crisis, I went to a couple of clinicians, and I would just tell you that some of the clinicians that you have in town are very generous with their money. Because if people do not have the funding, we have some that go as low as $75 an hour. That is extremely cheap. I would tell you that I have seen a clinician since my boy passed away for four years, and the VA pays her $185 for my visits, okay? So the idea behind that is, we kind of looked at what an average would be, and we thought that an on-call clinician would be worth $125 an hour. And with the amount of calls that we have, we asked, you know, we thought between four to six hours a month, okay? To be completely transparent, I went to the county commissioners this morning, and the county commissioners offered to pay $500 a month, which would be four hours for a clinician outside of the city of Council Grove. With that said, I will, I will let, first ask if you have any questions. I did sit with Nick today and Chief Langren, and then I'll let Nick say whether I forgot anything or anything he'd like to add, but I'd like to entertain any questions that you might have first.
Do you have any high school teachers on your committee, Jim?
I have, I actually have Dustin San Romani, who is an elementary teacher, which is a great place to start for us. I have Christie Godley, who's the high school counselor, who, oh, by the way, has twice this year faced it with high school students, okay? And then Micah Thornboss, as a veteran, she's one of our team members. She's not on our steering committee, but at the district office, she is there. She is one of our team members for when we get the community involved, she'll get involved with the team and go from there. And that was part of the reason why I asked those individuals, because they are in the school. I unfortunately got to live the horror of the youngest recorded suicide victim in Kansas. A colonel that I worked with, his 10-year-old daughter died by suicide in Topeka, and that is the youngest recorded suicide in Kansas. So we understand fully the need to, and it's a touchy subject for a lot of people, you know? For a lot of areas, it's been tough for us to do, but it's, I think it's important enough work that we get it into the public eye so that we can start looking out for one another so we don't have to have another DJ Bremer, the young man who just passed away here not too long ago.
How are you proposing this program work? I mean, I'm not saying it's not, not that it's not gonna work. I mean, how is it going to be effective? How's it going to?
So the idea would be, is that we would have, we would have that, we would have that mental health first responder on call. Police officer would go out. They would go to, go to a site, which they have many duties as, at a site. And if they felt that that person was in crisis, then they would make that call. I have talked to both Sheriff Simeka and Chief Langren and told them that I would be the one that would go out and look for those clinicians. I will try to go find as many as I can. You can't put all your eggs in one basket because sooner or later, somebody's not gonna be available. But to have a roster available, that would go to both the police department here and to the county sheriff. They would know who to call when somebody is in crisis. As it stands right now, what happens is that officer makes the determination whether that person is in crisis and they should voluntarily be left or involuntarily taken to the hospital. Once they go to the hospital, they wait on Crosswinds to come. Our idea is that assessment would already be made on-site. So if you have a licensed clinician, they could make the assessment on-site and make the determination, do they, do they need to go to the hospital, either voluntary or involuntarily, and then already have set up everything for Crosswinds. I would tell you, having been through the VA process, and let me tell you, first of all, our Topeka VA is amazing. But when I first started talking about mental health to the VA, I was pushed from clinician to clinician to clinician to clinician. We don't need that in our county. If it's only one or two people talking instead of, I just told my story to the police officer on the ground, now I've got to tell it again, now I have to tell it again, now I have to tell it again, that is a triggering force for people. As opposed to, the police officer sees they're in mental health crisis, a licensed clinician comes, they tell their story one time, and then the clinician passes off the notes. Visited with both Sheriff Simeka and with Sean, and they said that would take no steps out of what either of them do. It would just add a level into their standard operating procedure. Would not remove anything from what they currently do.
Okay, so, and I'm asking questions, you guys will jump in and ask questions, too, but my question would be, okay, so you have a roster available, the officer on-site makes the call, says, I need somebody here. Who from there will make the calls down the roster? I mean, I know you say you're gonna have somebody on call, but, you know, what if that person isn't available for some reason, or, you know, how, because that officer, I can't see that officer would be able to call every, you know, he's not there, she's gone, he's sick, you know, the officer couldn't continue to make the calls down the roster. Is that what your program is?
Well, within our program, we have the ability to send somebody that would be, that would be not, I would say, trained, but they would not be clinically trained, which is the, I think is the key. You know, I certainly would not feel comfortable going someplace and telling them, no, I would never leave somebody alone, for one, which in some cases we have had happen, you know? But the idea behind that would be to have enough clinicians where they know what days they're on call. And if they know they're on call, then they need to be made available. One of the things that we discussed earlier today is to make that a contract, with, make that a stipulation within the contract that they would sign. And this is not something where we would ask it to be paid every, it's only gonna be paid when it's used, you know? So if they go out for two hours and they make $250 and they don't use anything else, what we would ask is that money would roll over because it's an average number of hours. We would just ask it to roll over, and at the end of the year, if it's not there, then it's just still in whatever, whatever budget you choose, you know, if you choose to pull it out of. So the idea would be, I would think ideally, we would like have three to five. You know, I've talked to Christie Godley, and she has told me that she will assist me with trying to find clinicians. I know for sure that she would be interesting in doing it. Interestingly, though, I've called Crosswinds, the executive director in Emporia, twice and never received a call back. So that's, I might just go stand on his doorstep someday and say. Oh, you'd ask? I've got it in my notes. I've got it in my notes at home.
So if I was an officer and I showed up on scene in a situation like that, who would be my first call?
It would be to the, it would be the clinician that's on call.
So, okay.
And that roster would be available to both the Council Grove Police Department and to the Sheriff's Department. Because I know that you guys have a mutual understanding as well, so it may not, you know, it could be, it could be somebody else. So it would only be right that that roster goes out to both departments.
Who would provide the roster and make changes, you know?
I would.
You would be handling all of it?
I would, absolutely.
So, I think it's a great idea, but I think everything needs to be in writing. Function and operates, there's no gray area or misunderstanding with who's responsible for what, who's on duty, you know, what the agreement is and all those things. And we kind of require that of anybody that the city gets money from, is that they turn in something or tell us what they're gonna use the money for and how that's gonna function and look.
I agree, it's a great program. I mean, I agree, that's a good thing, and it's needed. But a question, I guess, is, I'm kind of like Nick, maybe having it in writing, and then, just the way that it will function. Because the money you are asking for from us and then the county has given you is to pay the clinicians.
That's correct.
It's $500 a month is what you're asking for, basically.
That's correct.
Something like that. Okay, so what does the other $100,000 go for that you've got?
So the $100,000 that we get goes for programs and education within, within the county. So for instance, we're in Phase Two right now, going into Phase Three. At the end of Phase Three, everybody on our steering committee, all 11 people, are fully trained to educate in the suicide prevention and education program. That training will all be free to anybody in the county once we start doing that. Because that'll be something I come for later, is access to the, to the armory to have, to host these, okay? I will, I will give you an example. I spoke to a young lady in Texas who has four counties trying to do this. Her first event in, in the Phase Four, where you start doing that, she only had eight people show up. So she offered free pizza and 838 people showed up. But out of that, she has now regularly had over 100 people at every quarterly meeting that they have, every quarterly training and education that they have. So what, what we have done is, because it needed to go through a nonprofit, I went and I briefed the Council Grove Area Foundation. It goes into the Council Grove Area Foundation. 20% of that a month comes into an account that we haven't even set up yet. We have spent $0 right now. And like I said, Madam Mayor, if I could fund it, I wouldn't be standing here. I really wouldn't because I think it's that important. So that $100,000 over time needs to sustain us because at the end of three years, there's nothing there. One of the things they talk about is finding community partners to help fund long-term. Because once a person goes through a certain amount of training, they no longer need that training, but the hope is, over time, that more and more people funnel through and more and more people, you know, begin to do this. I saw that Kelly was here, but I have also briefed this to Aaron Doty, and Aaron, next year, would like to use this as a, as a teacher's, a teacher's training day, you know, something that we could do, a teacher's, a teacher's training day. Like I said, the 11 folks that are on that, we right now, I have been to several, but everybody else right now has, has done a guarantee to do a two to four-hour online training. And then I have contacted the Kansas Army National Guard, who of course asked us to do this. And we are going to have them come down and teach us what's called assist training. And that is a two-hour training that normally costs $250 a person, and they're gonna give it to us for free. So the money, the money is there. I can buy, I can buy pamphlets, I can buy stick, I can buy billboards, I can do anything, but I can't buy a person's time. And it doesn't make any sense to me either, quite honestly. It doesn't make sense to me either. But that's the government at its finest, I guess.
So this evening, you're kind of looking for a commitment of so much money per month to offset the cost of the clinicians when you get it all put together?
Yes, sir.
So you, would you be able then to kind of give us more of an outline and bring it back to us?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You know, because definitely, I think we all believe it's important, you know? And, but I don't, you know, I think we probably need a little bit more.
Yeah, I think I could outline in detail, I could outline in detail what each individual is going to do. Absolutely could.
Yeah, if we could just have a little bit more of an outline of how it's gonna work so that we don't get ourselves.
Sure.
Somewhere where we don't understand.
Do you, do you have some clinicians in mind?
Well.
Or are there any in the county now?
Yes, we have, that I'm aware of, we have four in the county. And again, I've kind of left that to, Christie has said that she will take that on and be willing to be a part of it, you know? And I'll be honest, she's, she's pretty good. So, and she's around the kids all the time, and she's been here forever. So, you know, that's, that's a great cornerstone piece, I think, for our county. But yes, I would, I would actually be, absolutely be able to provide everything you need in writing. And if, you know, I can run it through Nick, and if he thinks something needs to be tweaked, we can, we can make sure that everybody's satisfied with it.
That'd be great. I appreciate very much what you're doing. I'm sure we all do.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's something we need, so.
Absolutely. Fully concur.
If you wanna get it all together and come back and see us, or send it to Nick, or whatever you want to do, however you want to do.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
And thank your committee as well.
I will. We meet the last Thursday of every month at 12:15 at Alexander Arc Works, if anybody would like to come down. It's open to the public.
Last Thursday, 12:15 at Alexander's?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Moving on, Mona, massacre for the daughters of the American Revolution.
Good evening. Hopefully, you can kind of tell what I've got here. First page is an aerial view I just got off Google. My plan is, and I had to mention this to Nick, DAR had the Madonna cleaned, damaged repaired, and then sealed three years ago. I think the park needs to have a little upgrade, primarily on the south and the east sides. There's lots of trees behind, and I think they're mainly in real good shape. What I did was I talked with my brother, who's a forester. What I wanted to do was to get trees that were either native or had the ability to survive here. They need to be able to survive droughts, heat, but cold winters as well. He and I got together and talked. What I would propose that, that I, that I could do, right coming into the Madonna from the corner where the light is, I would like to plant four trees that are a maximum of about 20 to 25 feet tall, and the diameter would be about what their height is. So I've kind of measured between the Madonna and the high wires. I don't want the wires to become an issue, so I don't want to plant anything so large that they're gonna get into the house. This corner, right here. See, I didn't make an outline, sorry.
No, you're fine. I was just saying if it was on.
You can look at that.
Yeah.
These lines right here, I want to stay out of, and then right along here. So, and I plan to get about one and a half to two-inch diameter. Mona had a term for that, but now I can't, cultivar, not cultivar. But anyway, a diameter of the, of the trunk. I don't want to get too young, and you don't want to get them too old. So I, that's what I'd like to do, is those four. But also, when I moved here in '98, there was still a tree to the west. DAR, we try to have events like at 5:00 in the afternoon, and it's just a, you know, solar death. And nothing is prettier to me than going into a pasture when I would do cattle calls and see a beautiful burr oak tree. And they withstand everything. They don't bend with the constant winds. So I was gonna see if we could plant two burr oaks, number five and number six. And if we go halfway between, kind of, I measured between where the Madonna was and the sidewalk on the, on the south one, there shouldn't be anything to impede. And then on that west side, considering the, the overhead wires again, one could fit there. So I'm proposing like these six trees. I was originally thinking for the smaller ones, Bradford pears. They have new cultivars that withstand the breakage, but my brother, a forester, said they have actually become invasive in some areas, so I don't want to do that. So my thoughts are like a service berry tree, crabapple, but they're so darn messy. I kind of, I think service berry would be nice. So four service berries and then two burr oaks. And then my funding I plan to do is I got area foundation grants when we worked on the Madonna, so I was gonna put in a couple grants to see for payment. So I'm not asking for any money, just kind of the, the permission to do it.
Who would plant them? Dick, you're gonna plant them and take care of them?
Well, I'll test them by other, because we have obviously sprinkler, sprinkler heads and all that stuff in the ground. Some of these are located where sprinkler head is.
Yeah, I need to look into those. I know you have some.
Well, yeah, Derek knows where they're all at, so we'd have to help with that.
And I got together with my brother this weekend, and he said, you know, I was looking at the park where the guardian of the grove is. Well, from looking over the top, I couldn't really see. You guys had planted two trees. two trees.
Yep.
But of the, and that's the fourth page, I was kind of showing where I would plant for, but I could sure plant maybe some service berry at 10 and 9, because you've already planted one where I would have planted 7 and 8. It would just add some color, add some shade for people who maybe, I see lots of people go there, and, and then there's not really anywhere to get out of the sun, except way in the back.
So, I think it's a great idea. I've always heard that, you know, the best time is planting trees yesterday, the next best time's today, so I think that's a good, good thing. Do we have any plans in the future to, for any upgrades and planting of trees or anything like that, Nick?
Well, we have a tree program down at the road. Yeah, and we planted, first year, nine, we got nine more, we're planting this spring. So, on the road, walking, they're all of some type of oak.
Yeah.
So, because it's a hardwood tree that isn't standing, so.
And one of those went in the guardian of the grove.
Yep, that's up with the one that's from the call.
I went down there and looked, I saw where those two are. And I'd be responsible for watering them that first year or two, you know, I got my brother telling me what all I need to be doing.
Sure.
And I planted a burr oak in my house on Chautauqua, and I moved there in like 2000, and it's gone gangbusters, and we got a little teeny, just a volunteer from our yard.
Awesome.
And I put the supports in to put around them. Any questions on?
The service berries look like nice trees, they're just looking good.
Yeah, yeah, because I hadn't heard of a service berry till Monty mentioned them, but I was, I like the pears, because they're a good size, but I don't want to add to any more problems with that invasiveness.
Last three weeks, I've seen all kinds of stuff about how bad they are.
Yeah, I never had enough until last two weeks either.
Yeah.
Service berry.
And they're about that size that I think would work in there.
And they look like they come in several different colors, too, so.
But I thought it'd kind of cool on that walkway up to the Madonna maker, look pretty nice. And do I need to talk to you about checking which sprinklers are?
Yeah, I think they'll vote on it, we'll have to have a motion to do all that, and then, once they approve it, yeah, I don't have, just get with me when you're, get your grants and stuff, get the trees bought, and.
Yeah, I plan to do it this fall.
So, that'd be good, by this fall, to do that. Just get with me, and I can find people to help you out and locate that stuff.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions, more questions for Mona? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we want to plant the trees and bar any sprinkler issues, I think it's kind of breaking up.
We moved it seconded to have Mona plant trees at the Madonna and water them and support them and do maybe.
Well, and you still have that little cart?
We know, that's.
That's the price, right cart.
Okay, I might talk to them, they let me use it when I did stuff over there before.
Have the grill, both yours.
I will talk to them.
Have a fryer right there.
You guys, I'll talk to you.
Yeah, so, okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
You beat, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to be a friend.
We'll talk to you, we'll see if it's working. Okay, Safe Rides to School, Nick?
So, as part of the application to move forward and get funds for the project Phase One, we had to pass a resolution, it's just basically stating that the city is eligible to submit an application for Kansas Department of Transportation's for use of transportation alternatives program funds for the Safe Rides to School Phase One Improvement Project, and basically giving me permission to sign the paperwork to do that.
Anybody have any questions about that, or?
And we do have the funds to do it, so the matching part.
So, do I hear a motion?
So, moved.
Okay. Okay. Been moved in seconded to allow Nick to move forward with the program applications for Safe Rides to School. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. Okay, Sales Tax Grant Committee recommendations.
All right. We met last Tuesday, the committee did, and they have recommended the following. The first up is Flint Hills Rebuilders, they're requesting $5,000 in sales tax grant funding. The committee recommended approval of the request for $5,000 of the sales tax funds. Does everybody know what the Flint Hills Rebuilders does?
Any questions about that? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, you approve the $1,000.
Okay. Second?
Seconded.
Okay. Been moved in seconded to approve $5,000 sales tax grant to the Flint Hills Rebuilders, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. Okay?
All right, the next one up was the Chamber, they requested $25,000 sales tax grant funds. The committee voted to approve a modified amount of $20,000. Obviously, that's used for marketing and promotions and so on and so forth. I think Angie, if you guys have a question regarding some of that, ask Angie.
They had originally asked for $25,000, and most, several of you were there, but, and they will probably, possibly come back for, for that at the time.
Where are we at with that $5,000? Is she going to come?
Yeah, we're, we're doing some more strategizing, getting some more information before we approach you about it.
So, the $20,000 we approved is basically what we do every year for the Chamber. They were asking for an extra $5,000 for some marketing, that we haven't ever.
To include billboards.
Yeah, and, and we, we didn't feel like we should approve that, because we, we only have $100,000 for the year.
Right.
And we, we spent $45,000 of it last, last, last week for the, for the, for the night, and then we would have been to $50,000 if we'd approved that. So, we felt it was good for them to get their ducks in a row, come back, present it, and then, we're probably going to want to do it, I think, but we need to find a way to pay for it, things like that.
Need more information, yeah.
And justify the expenditure. But I think it's a good thing.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the $20,000 grant to the Chamber Call.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay. I have to keep it, since I started the papers.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six to zero. Okay?
Sean Gaze is next, they requested $20,000, and the committee is recommending the approval of $20,000, and that's for marketing. And Deidre can kind of go into detail about where they're planning on marketing and focusing their attention on, if you guys have questions about it.
Does anybody have questions there? Are, doing the marketing, Deidre, if you want to just real quick hit on that, your guys are doing it more soft this time?
Yeah, sure, so we are focusing heavily on digital, which are digitally placed ads on websites like Google, Amazon, Yahoo, the weather channel. We buy into a marketplace that gives us more buying power than you do on the open market. So typically, to buy into digital advertising like this, you'd see initial commitments of $100 to $150,000 to be able to find yourself in a place like this where you could reach individuals in that type of advertising. But we are spending right around $9,000 as part of the co-op that we've bought into to reach individuals in the Wichita area. Our demographic that we try to target is primarily 25 to 44, which is the base of our festival goers, and then, we, I don't have the impressions in front of me, but it's about a six-week time period, and we're talking about around 800,000 people a week that we're reaching with about $2,000 a week in not advertising. So, it's really affordable, it's a great way to reach people, it's a great way to see the actual return on our investment, because those will be targeted ads with a call to action to buy tickets on the Wichita Days website. So, it's, there's a lot of reporting and analytics that can help us understand what we should do in the future, as well as see success in the current time.
And in the past, they've more done toward Topeka, Manhattan with the roads and stuff, we decided to, they, they decided, we decided it was great that they were going toward the other direction, so.
Yeah, and we hope that if we reach people in Wichita this year and can get them to come here for the festival, that we can keep them in the future and keep their work remaining at the Council Grove.
Increase, increase the attendance. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved in seconded to do the sales tax grant for $20,000, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. Moving on, Police Inspector recommendation from Marquis Godley. The police entire committee recommends the appointment of Marquis Godley, some Class B officer, to a Class A officer at a pay rate of $18.32 per hour. Officer Godley successfully completed the Kansas law enforcement training, and since his return, he has been active in the community and shown good work ethic. So, I would approve that appointment and ask for a motion to approve my appointment in development.
So moved.
Okay? Seconded. Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve Mark Godley's from Class B to Class A at a pay rate of $18.32. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And that, effective date on that would be April 27th, that'd be the start of the new pay period. And one other thing, I just realized, I didn't give you guys a resolution.
I was going to say, yeah, I was just getting ready to say the same thing.
The resolution number for, the resolution for the Safe Rides to Schools, O41922-01.
Okay, thank you. That's been thinking a lot there. Okay. Another appointment, recommendation here. The Utilities Committee recommends appointment of John Vay, the Utilities Foreman, at a pay rate of $20 an hour. Mr. Vay will be required to complete his water and sewer certifications in his first three years of employment. This appointment is contingent upon completing a physical drug, alcohol screening, and background check. And so, so, I still make the appointment, and I would appreciate a motion to approve that appointment.
Make a motion to approve that appointment?
Okay, and?
Seconded.
Jason seconded? Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Got to write these down before I forget. To appoint, approve the appointment of John Vay, the Utilities Foreman, at a pay rate of $20 an hour, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. Okay. The Utilities Department recommends a pay increase for Dave Simers from 1682 to 1882 for successfully passing his Class II water operations certification. Do you want to hear a motion to approve that pay increase?
So moved.
Okay.
Or seconded, whichever.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. The Utilities Department recommends Mike Stover receive a retention pay raise from $15 to $16 per hour. Motion, do I hear a motion? Jason and?
Keith.
They were about the same. Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries. Six to zero. Thank you. Okay. Next, Utilities Department recommends addition water sewer rates.
So, if you guys remember 2019, we did that water rate analysis, and from that, the recommendation was to increase water rates at 3% for a total of six years, five years, and then the sixth year, do a reevaluation of where the funds are for the water sewer. So, in keeping with that, on.
I can't remember what page you're on there.
Page 38. Page 38, you have what the current is and what the new would be on there, with the 3%.
Let's keep the sound schedule there.
It does, yep.
The water rates within the city would go from 541 per thousand to 557 per thousand. Sewer would go from 192 per thousand to 198 per thousand. Water rates outside of the city would go from 1082 per thousand to 1114 per thousand. Sewer rates outside of the city would go from 383 per thousand to 395 per thousand. Okay, do I hear any comments, concerns?
This would be, what, the third out of five?
This would be the fourth year, so we got one more year of this.
Okay, fourth out of five.
Yep, okay. 1922, yeah, fourth year.
And then we'll be caught up.
Yeah, after we do the next one, we'll do another analysis of what they recommend, make sure we're, we're needing to be fund wise in the water and sewer, so we're not like we were when we, when we did that, we're at risk in two, three years of being bankrupt in water and sewer, so.
We're actually paying more to make water than we were to.
We were giving water.
We're giving water when, yeah.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion concerning this?
Only a motion that we approve the water rate increases as they appear in tonight's packet on page 38.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero.
And on the other two gentlemen there, David and Michael, who got raises, their effective date would be the same thing on the raises of 27.
The 27, okay.
Yep. Make it easier on them again. Go backwards and then try to go forwards, not fun.
At this time, I appreciate a motion for an executive session, turning on privilege to Lake for.
30, I think it'd be fine.
30 minutes? With all of us, the attorney and administrator. Anybody? Do that?
Do I need a motion that we go into executive session for 30 minutes, turning on privilege with the entire council, the mayor, city attorney and city administrator for City Lake matter?
Second?
Seconded.
Okay. Been moved in seconded to go into executive session, all those in favor? Okay, we're ready for governing body, we're going to start, Sean, we'll start with you.
How do you think, Steve?
Okay. Keith?
I am also good, my attacking right.
Okay. Larry?
No, nothing for me this evening.
Okay. Mark?
Nothing.
Okay, Sharon?
I'm good, you're both busy.
Okay. Okay, Bill?
I'm am, thank you.
Okay. Nick?
Um, I have nothing either. Nothing, I mean, I have anything, you guys are aware, I don't have any updates or anything for you guys, so.
I don't have anything either, so if anybody has a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So seconded.
Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries. Did I ask you? Oh, yeah, I did ask you. I did ask you.
Yeah, he said he didn't care.